Okay, we're gonna call to order the City Council Successor Agency Financing Power Authority Meeting. City Clerk, roll call please.
City Councilman member, Agency Director, Authority Member Johnson, present. Mann.
I'm present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris. We have a quorum.
Move to excuse the mayor.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. The invocation, the spiritual, the assembly of Baja, welcome.
Good evening, council. And I noticed on the agenda you're gonna be dealing with some housing issues, so I felt this prayer was particularly relevant. Oh God, my God, shield thy trusted servants from the evils of self and passion. Protect them with the watchful eye of thy loving kindness from all rancor, hate, and envy. Shelter them in the impregnable stronghold of thy cause. And safe from the darts of doubtfulness, make them the manifestations of thy glorious signs. Illumin their faces with the effulgent rays shed from the day spring of thy divine unity. Gladden their hearts with the verses revealed from thy holy kingdom. Strengthen their loins by thine all-swaying power that cometh from thy realm of glory. Thou art the All-Bountiful, the Protector, the Almighty, the Gracious. Al du Baja.
Thank you. Sandra, will you do that for the judge, please?
Yes, thank you. Very one. Right hand over your heart, repeat after me. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozegian, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
We have no speaker cards for the minutes. I need a motion and a second. So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Inanimas? Consent calendar, no speaker cards. Moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordered. PH1, we're gonna open a public hearing for PH1. Brian, you have this?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and members of the council. This is an item that is before you to consider adoption of a resolution essentially ratifying the county's adoption of the fire fees for the Fire Protection District that covers our area. This is something we do on an annual basis. The process is pretty straightforward. The Los Angeles County Fire Department conducts a capital improvement study every year and then determines what would be the necessary amount of funding to fund that within the parameters of the plan. In this particular case, that was adopted by the LA County Board of Supervisors, and the fee that would be attached to new development projects within the city at the time of building permit issuance actually would remain the same as it has been for the past year under this, eighty-four point twenty-six cents per square foot. We are recommending that you adopt the resolution to ratify this. The adoption of this resolution is necessary to allow the city to legally collect this fee and provide it to the Los Angeles County Fire Protection District. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions? No questions from the general public? We're gonna close the public hearing. You need a motion and a second.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 15-01.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four zero. NB1, Barbara.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Crist and members of the City Council. The item before you at this time for consideration is adoption of Resolution Number 15-02, which rescinds Resolution Number 13-47 and establishes the policy for the investment of public funds for the City of Lancaster. As a normal course of our business on an annual basis, we do review our investment policy. The policy sets the rules and parameters upon which we base our investments of the city's funds. We update the policy and we've recommended some minor changes to the policy to reflect any changes in legislation or in general business practice. The recommended changes are minor and just more ministerial, and there's nothing that I would consider major or significantly changing our policy. So with that, I would recommend that you adopt Resolution 15-02, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any comments?
None.
I need a motion and a second.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number 15-02.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Four zero. Mr. Bozegian, NB2?
This presentation's actually gonna be given by Jason Cottrell and Barbara Boswell, but I wanted to start it off by thanking the council for their leadership on this. We continue to be first in the CCA, as you'll hear. Nothing happens without good leadership, and that's the God's honest truth. However, I think it's also important that we publicly acknowledge our leaders at the staff level, and they're not gonna do it, so I wanna make sure that people publicly recognize that both Jason and Barbara have done a wonderful job in going through a whole miramid of regulations and getting over roadblocks to get us to this point, and they deserve to be publicly acknowledged for all the work they've done. So I wanna make sure that's said before they start the presentation. Thank you.
It's not often he says nice things about us, so I'm gonna go and replay that on the recorded version later.
I say lots of nice things about Barbara.
We rehearse that. Thank you guys for the opportunity. Before we start with what's next, and then Barbara's gonna touch on what we're doing today and what we're gonna be doing in the future, I wanna take the opportunity to recap a little bit about where we've been and where we're at today. As you know, we've been working on this for eighteen months now, and there has been a lot of projects, a lot of agreements, a lot of things that have come before the council, and we wanted to use this opportunity to recap. And as you recall, we're looking at this project in phases, so we've gone through a number of different phases, and we're going into what would be considered the power procurement phase and then later rate setting, and Barbara will get into the details of that. But to get to this point, we started with a feasibility study, and if you guys recall, that was a consultant we hired to come in and identify whether this plan and this project works, right? Can we make it happen? What are the fatal flaws that might exist that cause this program to not work, function, or be financially viable? Once we got over that hurdle, the determination was that this is a viable program that can happen not only in Lancaster but in Southern California Edison territory totally. The second of that was the implementation plan. The implementation plan, as you recall, was a regulatory process that we were required to go to that identifies how we're gonna implement and roll out this program. That program is then submitted to the PUC for approval, and they clarify not for approval but for acceptance and certification. We went to the council, got that approved, and subsequently had that approved by the Public Utilities Commission. And the next phase of that was trying to identify back office consultants to set up the program, as well as agreement, necessary agreements with Southern California Edison to assure that we had the proper interface, so that when the billing occurred and when some of those transactions were happening, that we had the proper staffing onboard, we had the proper consulting services onboard to make that happen, and that has happened as well. Tonight, as Barbara will talk about, we're entering the procurement phase, and each of these processes is a kind of a threshold by which you go into the next level. So all those other things we've done before have all determined that this is a viable product, this is a viable program, that's not only gonna save our citizens money but provide them a greener type of energy, and to this day, we have not identified any reason why that can't be true, and Barbara will touch on that a little bit more. Before we go into that, I'd like to acknowledge some of our staff as well, and I think as we talk about who they are and what they're gonna be doing, it'll give you a good feel of what the responsibilities of the city are gonna be, as well as what responsibilities of the consultants are gonna be. But first of all, I'd like to acknowledge them because there's, at this point, there's two groups of people, let me clarify, three groups of people who have knowledge in forming CCA. That's the group in Sonoma, that's the group in Marin, and the only one in Southern California Edison territory is a group of people I'm gonna be introducing you to. They have, in a short period of time, in conjunction with doing their own work, have become experts in the formation of CCA, have become experts in their field in the energy side of the business, and you know, and oftentimes Barbara and I get up here and we get the accolades from the council and sometimes from Mark, but at the end of the day, there's a whole lot of work that's happening behind the scenes. There's a whole lot of contracts that are being reviewed, a whole lot of things happening, and just wanna announce them. First is Kathy DeFalco. If you guys could stand up.
Yay.
Jason, bring him up.
Come on down, Kathy. Kathy's been heading up our contracts and procurement process, and as you'll see tonight, this is not an easy process, and it's not easy to do it the first time. And oftentimes, this is gonna be a continuing process, so not only as staff, Kathy's gonna have a continuing role to procure energy on a regular basis, right? The way we structure our energy procurement allows for flexibility, structuring different product types. Kathy's gonna be continually and consistently having to procure power on her behalf or on the citizens' behalf. Heather Swan. Heather's been serving as our Southern California liaison, or Southern California Edison liaison as our regulatory affairs. So there was a point at which legislation was being passed that was looking to eliminate or impact the way CCAs were managed. Heather went up to Sacramento, fought the good fight with our partners in Marin and Sonoma, and ended up getting the legislation killed. Those are gonna be continuing efforts that we're gonna have to continue to make, because there are factions out there who don't wanna see CCA succeed, rightfully so, but we're gonna have to have a regulatory team, a process by which we make sure that we have our needs represented up there in the state capitol. Shannon, Shannon Dow, who's in charge of our... Shannon's been managing our marketing and outreach. This is not only, this is a dual role purpose. One is gonna be the original launch, which is the message is going to be, don't opt out, but as we continue, as products become available, different types of products, different types of opportunities, we're gonna have a continuing marketing and outreach effort to say, we have a different product, we have a better product, we have a more tailored product, depending upon what happens as the CCA becomes a little more mature. Monique Edwards. Probably the most unnoticed and most important products we have is gonna be IT and customer care. If you can imagine rolling out fifty thousand user accounts, each one of those accounts needs to have a digital tracking process that's connected to Southern California Edison, our systems, the banking systems, everything that needs to happen, as well as the process by which if somebody has a concern or a question about their bill, they're gonna pick up the phone, and they're gonna call somebody, and Monique's gonna be in charge of that customer care and the IT interface with Southern California Edison and the citizens. And then last but not least, Kathy Wells. Who has become our rate analyst, our bill expert, so if there's a question about what kinda rate Edison has or what your rate relates to that rate, we're gonna have somebody there to respond to that, and at this point, this is the team we've had, and I must say that this is on top of everything they're asked to do on a daily basis as well. They still have their regular duties to do. This is them taking the lead, taking the opportunity to step forward and say, hey, I wanna step up, I believe in this, I wanna do what's right, I think I have the skills and abilities to make this happen, and frankly, we wouldn't be here today, we wouldn't have the opportunity to come and talk to the council without this group of people here doing the work that they've done, so I just wanna give them a big round of applause. With that, I'll turn it over to Barbara to tell you what we're doing tonight and where we're going tomorrow and the next couple of weeks in the future, so, thank you.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor Crist and members of the City Council. As I stand before you tonight, I have to say I'm very proud. I am proud to be part of such a great team, and I'm proud to be here, working for you, doing the work of the City Council, City Council that's brave enough to stand out there and support the establishment of the first community choice aggregation program in Southern California and the first standalone city in the state of California. It's, I think the actions that we take tonight, and you know, a year from now, we'll look back and we'll say, you know, that January of two thousand and fifteen was a month that changed the history of the City of Lancaster, and it's through your support and leadership that we're able to do this work. You know, just a couple of comments about why CCA is so important. There is sixty million dollars of electric utility revenues that leave our community and go to a private company. Our goal is to provide a better product, a greener product, and a cheaper product than Southern California Edison, and keep those revenues here in the community to benefit the community and support local development, support our businesses, and benefit our local community. We're also pleased to say that the program will help us meet our goal of achieving net zero. The actions before you are a bit unusual in nature, so I'll take just a minute to go over them. We're asking the council to approve the master agreement, which is an industry standard agreement that is used in the electric utility business for the procurement of power. It's for the requisite energy products and services, including electric energy, renewable energy, resource adequacy capacity, and scheduling coordinator services. We're asking for you to approve them in substantially the form, because there are still negotiations that we're working out on some of the term details, but the basis of the agreement will go forward as you approve them. We are asking you also to approve the confirmations. The confirmations will then set out the amount of quantity and eventually the price that we will pay for energy. We're asking you to authorize the city manager to execute the agreements, and the reason is because the pricing of electric utility is very volatile, and when we get the final unbinding pricing, we have a very short window of opportunity to then execute those contracts. We did get indicative or preliminary pricing last week that basically told us if we were to execute those contracts last week, what price would it be? That price told us that yes, we can achieve our goals of providing a greener product than Southern California Edison at a cheaper cost to our customers with the ability to set aside the reserves that we believe are essential and have financial stability and be financially viable. Next steps, we will get final pricing from the energy supply bidders on January the twenty-sixth, then the month of, we will execute those contracts. The month of February will be set aside for rate setting, so we will come back before the council during the month of February to establish the rates for Lancaster Choice Energy. In May, we will go live serving electricity to the municipal accounts, and then the month of October will be when our commercial and industrial and residential customers will become Lancaster Choice Energy customers. It's an exciting time to be a part of the City of Lancaster and to be going through this process, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, however, I do have some comments. I'm really excited, as you're saying, to be able to be here and witness what we are witnessing, for us to, as a team, think outside the box and to be able, and not many of us can say, to have a choice with our utility bills. I mean, you move into a home and you just know what company to call, and whatever the rates are is what it is, and you receive your bill and we pay it. Now we'll be able to say that we have a choice. We can choose a company that we'd like to deal with, and we have choices on the amount that we want to pay, depending on the company we're with, and we, the City of Lancaster, are part of that. And to think outside the box and to be able to say that, and this year we'll be able to do that, is really exciting, very exciting, and that's because we, the citizens here, believe in all of us. We believe when we say we're going to do something, and we do it, and we do all the research that needs to be done to make it happen, and this is a great journey for us to be part of, and I'm even more honored to be able to see a line of five strong, very intelligent, one, two, three, four, five, women, that are part of this project, too.
There it is.
There it is.
There it is. I knew it was coming.
But you know, on a serious note, it was mentioned that they do their regular duties on top of what they're already doing, but on a serious note, it really does take a team. And Barbara, you're absolutely right, you two stepped up, and you believed in what you were doing, and because of you believing, others came onboard, too, to make it happen. And again, I'm just truly excited to be able to see history happening and looking forward to all of us having choices. Thank you.
Yeah, I know that we're starting down some, what I believe is that it's been some traveled road for some of us. It might be, some people might think that the city may be taking risks, but my experience historically, having this choice always delivered lower utility costs, and so there's a couple of things that I see ultimately, the citizens of Lancaster are gonna benefit here. One, you're gonna have somebody you can talk to. I know that, and I'm not, this is not beat on Southern California Edison, but I know that typically, when you pick up the phone and you have problems, ultimately, you're talking to somebody you don't know, and usually, the answer is, if it's not the one that you like, it's the end, it's the answer. There's no choice. Like Sandra said, you know, this way here, when we get frustrated, there is an alternative, and one can choose somewhere else, and right now, with utilities, specifically electricity, there is no choice. The second thing is, you don't really have a whole lot of control over utility rates, and some people in the public may not be aware, but the Southern California Edison's asked for double-digit increases that are gonna come before the ratepayers, the citizens of Lancaster, and the choice is, in the future, when things are not right, you'll be able to show up here on Tuesday night, because it'll be this group here that ultimately is the bottom-line responsible people, and you'll have somebody to be able to speak to, where right now, with Southern California Edison, I don't believe you really have that. So I see so many neat benefits that are coming before the citizens of Lancaster, and again, my experiences from ten and fifteen, well, actually fifteen years ago, when there's a choice like this given, ultimately, the business that I was involved with saved money other than buying power from Southern California Edison, so I'm very optimistic about where this will lead the people of Lancaster.
What will this do for the local economy?
Well, by providing choice, the customers of Lancaster Choice Energy will be able to choose what product they have, which will drive what rates they pay, so our goal is to have product choices that will result in a lower electric bill to the customers. We'll be able to have economic development opportunities, potentially do some business attraction-type programs. We can, we'll be able to support the local solar development, long-range goals, potentially be able to partner and have help to develop solar within the economy, and potentially own our own facilities.
And you talked about it earlier, about not pumping out sixty million dollars out of the community each year.
Each year, right.
That's tremendous. Can you go through the timeline? I think we all understand it, but can you go through the timeline and go into how citizens can opt out?
Sure. Part of the process will be, once we have procured our power and set our rates, then we have, there are periods of time when customers will receive notices from Lancaster Choice Energy. They'll receive notices two months prior to going live, so our, we'll talk about the commercial, industrial, residential, they'll be going live in October, so two months prior to that, they'll receive two notices, giving them, letting them know that we're coming, what we're offering, and that they do have the choice, if they choose to stay with Edison, to opt out, and to tell them how to do that. Then, once we go live, they actually have the opportunity again, they'll get notices for two months after we've gone live, and they'll have, again, the opportunity, should they choose, to opt out and stay with Southern California Edison.
I have a question for Jason. Why can't we do this with our water?
The state law allows the formation of a CCA, and it was approved in, I think, approximately two thousand and two, two thousand and three. They gave specific authority to city councils and counties to form community choice aggregators to basically combine all of the energy usage within your community, determine rates, determine product, and then provide that service. As relates to water, water is a much different function, it's owned and operated by the county. I would anticipate that a lot of the same is true, is that those rates, the rate-setting body that is closest to you is gonna mostly represent you, or gonna be, represent you to the greatest extent. Now, at this point, I don't know that the state law needs to be passed or what needs to be done, but I would anticipate that local control and rate-setting by the most local body is the most effective method, and that's what we're doing today. We're putting the rate-setting and product control within the agency and the organization that's most closest to the people.
I'm looking at this, and I have no faith in the PUC. We've gone to Sacramento several times with that in regards to Cal Water. They were going to increase it sixty percent with them, so what you're saying is, if we want to get into the water business, we'll have to go through there to get them, our legislators, to pass a law to enable us to do that?
I don't believe for the local water, I mean, depends on which water, the Cal Water issue that you've been working on, that's a public utility, or like I said, probably an investor-owned utility, that is governed and regulated by the PUC. In that case, yes, the PUC would have to approve that. As it relates to Water Works Forty, it's a county agency, I would anticipate that there wouldn't be any legislation required or special legislation to take over that water function.
I don't have any problem with Water Works Forty or that.
Yes.
Specifically, Cal Water. We need to help those people.
Does the same rate-setting process that you've went through, that you've battled for, for Cal Water residents, or the residents who work at Cal Water, is the same process the citizens have to go through with Southern California Edison? It is that far removed.
Right. So really, there's, you don't really have any control?
Yes.
One distinction, and I think it bears talking about, is that what we're doing in electricity is, we are in the power portion only, and Edison will still continue to maintain, transmit, bill, et cetera. The water is, has infrastructure-owned, and that's one of the challenges we're gonna have to do. That said, I've been with you, as has Jason, with some of these PUC things, and we shouldn't have any faith in this, so that is something that we're still working on, it's just a harder nut to crack right now.
Plus, when you talk about water and Water Works Forty, over sixty percent of it, I believe, is still provided by the State Water Project, and their rates are really governed by how much it costs for electricity to pump it over the hill, and that's the majority of it, because the water's basically free because of the infrastructure.
If you don't mind me adding, through this process, too, you fundamentally change the priority of rate-setting. Currently, through the PUC, what happens is, the company, whether it be Cal Water or Southern California Edison, provides a revenue requirement. They go up and say, this is how much money I need, right? And they say, this is why I need all this new money, and the PUC then determines whether they do or do not need that money. In this case, the rate-setting is a completely different function, right? Ken and I had this conversation with Mark earlier this morning, is that the rate-setting function then becomes a process of your citizens saying, we expect these kinda rates. How can you guys provide those types of rates? So it completely turns on its head, the process of rate-setting, the prioritization of rate-setting, which I think is another, of greater value as relates to, you know, who and how the voice is heard as relates to rate-setting.
Great job.
I have one more question, if I may, Vice Mayor. Thank you. If we wanted to opt in sooner, can we do that?
Yeah, we are offering the opportunity for, come May first, when we anticipate rolling out, we anticipate that those who want to opt in early have an opportunity to opt in early, and we'll provide that opportunity. As we get closer to that, you know, there's still a couple processes need to happen as it relates to rate-setting and some other things, but we're gonna have a marketing program that incorporates exactly that, so those who are, you know, gung-ho, ready to support, ready to save money before everybody else, you have the opportunity to opt in earlier, which then gives us the opportunity to hopefully say, look, your neighbors and friends are opting in. This is a good thing. This is saving you money, and it's saving the planet, and why not opt in now? Get it sooner.
Okay.
I'd like to be one of those first, and I'm sure all of us who believe in it will be. Thank you.
As Vice Mayor, I'd wanna be the first.
As a woman, I would like to be the first.
Which then gives us the opportunity to hopefully say, "Look, your neighbors and friends are opting in. This is a good thing. This is saving you money, and it's saving the planet, and why not opt in now? Get it sooner."
Okay. I'd like to be one of those first, and I'm sure all of us who believe in it will be. Thank you.
As Vice Mayor, I'd want to be the first.
As a woman, I would like to be the first.
When Rex returns, we'll ask you that.
The mayor just texted me, he wants to be the first. He's not here right now.
Marv, it's always ladies first.
Very good job. You guys have done a wonderful job.
Round of applause. Thank you.
I need a motion in a second to approve the master agreement.
I'll move that we approve the master agreement as so comprised.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so ordered, passes 4-0. CA 1. City Clerk, we have any communications?
No communications.
We're going to consider the nomination and appointment of, is it?
Elvie Ancheta.
Elvie Ancheta?
Yes. And Elvie's here.
She's in the back there.
Come on up, Elvie.
How are you?
Good.
You're the hot seat. So, I need a motion, and it's, is it the mayor's motion?
No, he's not here, can't be the mayor's.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to do it. I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Welcome. Does she have to be sworn in?
She'll be sworn in at the board.
At the board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before you walk away, Elvie, just wanted to thank you as a council and as a city for what you will be doing. Elvie has had a strong history in the educational industry, and also in the medical world, working at AV Hospitals and RN, and working also in education. You will truly be an asset to this, this board, that we are very much being proactive for the West Nile virus. For personal reasons, as we all know, my father passed from West Nile virus, and so we, and I thank my colleagues, are very proactive to making sure that we educate ourselves and save our loved ones, if not ourselves, and educate ourselves with the West Nile virus. So Elvie, we thank you very much for taking time from your busy schedule to make sure that we are able to do this.
Thank you, and I'm honored to be a part of a worthy cause, and I'll do my best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to give the city's appreciation to Matt Smith for what he's done. He's done an excellent job on the board. He's served three years?
About four.
Three or four years on the board, so he's done an excellent job, and thank you, Matt, for what you've done.
Absolutely.
Council reports. Ken, you have any from sanitation?
No, other than, this morning, we got a briefing and doing some preparation work for the upcoming budget, so I'll keep my fingers crossed, and we'll wait till later to see if we can make those guys work hard and keep track of those panties.
Ken, Sandra, you want to talk about AVTA?
Um, AVTA, we're having exciting things happening. As we know, the electric buses, the journey is moving forward. We know that some of the challenges that may have come up are considered as finances, but we don't consider that as a challenge. We consider that as a motivation, and we're making sure that we're going to meet that goal and make our community proud, and also our supervisor, Michael Antonovich, who believes in us, to make sure that that goal is reached with the electric buses.
City Attorney, we were given a letter by the City of Palmdale at AVTA, saying that we had a Brown Act violation. You've looked into this?
I have indeed.
Could you comment?
I certainly can. The action item that was listed on the agenda at the AVTA Board Meeting in November was to authorize the executive director to purchase eight clean diesel buses from Gillett Corporation under contract number 2014-12-Len Engel. Recommended action, authorize the executive director to purchase eight clean diesel buses from Gillett Corporation. At the meeting, a substitute motion was presented to modify the staff recommendation and instead direct staff to obtain a request for proposals as required by federal law for the purchase of potential electric buses, and bring that item, action item, back at a future meeting, and that that decision will be made at a future meeting. That action falls squarely within the scope of the purchase of buses that was listed on the agenda, is fully compliant with the Brown Act, and there is no problem with the action taken at the AVTA Board.
And just for the record, that we'll talk about purchasing electric buses as many times as the City of Palmdale needs to hear it?
That sounds fine with me.
Okay. Lancaster Housing Authority, no action. Lancaster Financing Authority, no action. Power Authority, no action. Successor Agency, no action. City Manager.
Just to, and if you'll allow me, as the year starts, I was just sort of reflecting on, you know, what I do and what I want to do for the year professionally. And one of the things that struck me, and it struck me over the last couple of weeks, is how many good people on staff and on the council I get to work with. And people don't see every day that what it means to go the extra mile and to not just let a, we work with agencies every day that just let problems go, and our staff doesn't do that. But it's also the same with our council, and I thought Ken was going to talk a little bit more about the sanitation district. That was just one meeting on one agency that you guys sit on, and you probably sit on 30 agencies. And the amount of effort it took for Ken to get the executive director, the finance director up here, to show a presentation, and to dig down and wire rates what they are, we learned a lot, and it's going to result in lower rates. And if Ken had just, and Ken's not special, no offense, Ken, but all of the council does that. And just by going that extra mile and not sitting up there and saying, "Well, they are what they are," the rates are going to be lower because of that, and we should see that next budget year. So I think it's important to realize, we have a really good and special group of people, staff, council, and the community that's working together, and we just need to keep nurturing that. So that would be my single goal for the year. Secondarily, we have two events coming up. One is the Air Show, which Vice Mayor Chris participated in the press conference, and the other is MLK Day of Service, and Justice Sunday, which also we have Vice Mayor Chris and Councilwoman Johnson. We have a short video on each to show you. This is where we stretch and tell jokes.
That's why they call it the Aerospace Valley. When I was a little kid, this is what we used to do. We used to watch and build the 16s, all the different planes up here in the valley. So it's a really great thing for the Yellow Valley.
Now, this is Edwards Air Force Base country, and it's good to have the Air Force team here underneath the shadow of Edwards.
Some kind of group that's going to come out here and learn to perform on Saturday and Sunday. The performance that you're going to see is a representation of the pride and precision of the United States Air Force Airmen Abroad, both active duty, Air Force Reserves, and the international guard.
This is the cradle of aviation, and to have the support we have from the community here, that's why we get the jet teams, and that's why we're going to be successful, so.
This is enjoyed by hundreds of thousands of people, but our community really enjoys it, and they benefit from it. All our hotels are full, the gas is being pumped, everybody benefits in the Yellow Valley for this.
today, the City of Lancaster is announcing nearly 30 community projects for the 2015 MLK Day of Service.
We're here to educate the public about the Day of Service. We have over 800 people that are giving service.
We're going to be starting with renovating our garden, which we have here. We're also going to be focusing on growing foods that they could eat, sell at a farmer's market, and feed our community as well.
It's about coming together. It's about not seeing colors, about not seeing any differences, it's about, you know, just working with your neighbor.
It's all about people serving people, and people killing the people. And when you do that, America's queen stands out.
I want the kids to see that people do give. They give, and they give for them, they give for the community, and when they grow up, I want them to continue to give.
He doesn't just represent color of his skin, but he represents what's right for our country, and that's to always give. You know, his famous word is, "It's always the right time to do the right thing."
And Rhonda, if you can tell the folks the dates of each of those, and then number of projects?
Sure. We're proud to bring the MLK Day of Service here today, this, actually, this Saturday on the 17th of January, and there are 31 projects throughout the city to take part in, and we've got just about 1,000 volunteers signed up now. So you can still visit our website at cityoflancasterca.org/MLKday to get involved. And then, we're really excited about the Air Show as well, which is March 21st and 22nd this year. And a surprise is coming soon, announcement about Friday, what, there might be some activities on Friday as well, so look to the skies for that.
That's great news. And the difference is, we had the Blue Angels last year, and we have the Thunderbirds this year.
Right, which is actually unheard of, they said, in an air show, to have those two back-to-back, especially for the first two years of an air show. It's very special, and it has a lot to do with, this is an Air Force area.
It's great.
Wonderful.
Okay, City Clerk.
This is the time to address the city council, agency, and authority on non-agendized matters. Please complete a speaker card, which can be found on the back table. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Fran, you're first. Where have you been?
Okay, I got good news today.
Good.
You have good news?
Good news.
You got to say something nice about the Vice Mayor first.
Please.
Okay, let's see. Well, I'm wearing this T-shirt for a reason. I was given this T-shirt today because I was told I'm the first one of the SESH group to get my solar panels on my house. Thank you. So, they gave me a T-shirt because I was boogying them so much. No. No, I told them, you know, it's a great group. Most of them, well, they were all volunteers, and they're all there to learn the job, because I know this is an upcoming product line that's coming in with solar panels. And they're a bunch of nice, young people. I really recommend it, and I'm very happy that you gave me this gift. Okay. My next thing, I have, I mentioned the last time I was here about the senior center. Okay. I have been involved with Norman Heckley and Christine of Mr. Antonovich's office, and we have some, I have some good news. They're going to be working on doing something. Either, we talked about buildings, and then I also brought up the monies that there are $62 million there sitting for parks and recreation, that maybe that could be used, maybe for skateboard park, or something for the younger or the teenage group of people, kids, students, where they can go after school.
I thought you wanted it for the seniors.
No, I'm done for the little guy and the big guy. Because there's no place for them to go, or do. So, what was brought up is, well, I don't know why, well, anyway, I'll tell you. We're looking at, or we're going to be thinking of using, we're looking into using the old Jiminy Hall building on J as one, that's a possibility. And then, maybe, my minutes are up already? I just began. Okay, anyway, using the old senior building, the senior building we have now, and maybe turning that into a club house for the kids, for the young people. Okay? There was something else I was going to bring up real quick, good news. Oh, because I also brought up, because we spent a lot of money going to the YMCA, and I got to go, I guess. This is really important, so give me a few minutes more, please. No, we use a YMCA to feed our, you know, the seniors and inbound, which we feed about 300 people on the inbound program, and about 180 seniors here at the senior center, plus we also feed about 60 or 80 people in Palmdale, their senior. But, the food comes from West Covina, two, about two hours away drive. Now, I suggest it, as a suggestion, that's all I can do, but we have, our own people here, what they possibly could use is the culinary department of the college, the students there. Somehow, it's, all this was discussed, it's nothing, of course, there's nothing set in gold or cement or whatever, but there's the possibilities. Because why can't we use our own people here? And why travel all over when we can do it here? Anyway, so that was brought up. So we're looking at that, of using the college students to prepare food, or any struts, and they're going to be coming to you guys, because you guys are going to have to work this out. I'm just the in-between guy.
Okay, Fran, thank you. Appreciate it.
I had more, but that's good.
Happy New Year, Fran.
Pardon?
Happy New Year.
Oh, thank you. Happy New Year to all of you too. God bless you.
Molly?
Yes, thank you, Rich.
Almost like Mark running track.
Good evening, city council, staff. Mayor Pro Tem, I've got two items here at your discretion. If you could give me a couple more minutes, under three minutes?
Let's see if you can do it in three. You called me Mayor Pro Tem, that's Palmdale.
health on the buses, on the public buses, there's certain types of individuals that deliberately soil the seats on the buses. I'm probably maybe sure that you've heard of this before. They lean on the side of the bus, in the inside seat, and they put their feet on the next seat. The next person that comes on the bus does not know that that seat is soiled by that person's shoes. person's shoes. A lot of people here, I don't know who rides buses here, but I ride the buses a lot. A lot of those buses stink, and they stink because of those soiled seats. This city needs to pass ordinances against those acts and punish those people. Usually, they're young people, even girls, and sometimes not so young people that do that. A lot of the buses in this town stink. That's number one. Did I, did I call you Mayor Pro Tem?
You did.
Is that, that's not correct?
It's Vice Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Chris. So that's a very important thing that I'm trying to pass on to you. The second item that I have here is the ticket machines at the metro station. You can't read the screens on those ticket machines. Now, I know that he's probably the county that owns those machines, but, you know, you're the next, or you people are the next up to speak to those people, to rip out those machines and put in there machines where people can actually read the screens so that, so they can buy their tickets.
Molly, they are, they're replacing the machines. They're going to.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So that's why I have.
How much longer do you have?
That was the second, yeah, two.
How much longer do you have?
One minute, can I just go one more minute? So, but my main concern is the buses. You're buying brand-new electric buses. How long do you think those brand-new electric buses are not going to be stinking from those dirty shoes on those seats if we don't put a stop to those certain individuals that do that?
Thank you. Terry? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Terry Fairfield, and I am the manager of Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park, and we have a few people here tonight that, we have an issue, and I recently sent this letter to the Public Safety Office, and didn't hear back from anyone, and we had already planned to come tonight, so I would like permission to read this letter. Okay. I would like to address a very disturbing problem that has existed in our mobile home park for many years. I'm guessing that other parks have the same problems. After speaking with Steve Southworth, he told me that the problem exists all over the It is a major safety concern for the residents and management of Lancaster Estates. As a manager of Lancaster Estates since 2007, I have not found a solution. Each year, it gets worse. The problem is speeding and running stop signs. We even have drivers that pass people who stop for the stop signs and pass people who drive the speed limit. The speed limit is posted on every street in the park, it is fifteen miles per hour. Stop signs are mounted at intersections to no avail. We have people parking in the fire lanes and in designated visitor parking even though there are signs posted. We have had cars parked in fire lanes towed in the past, now we are being told that the tow truck companies are afraid to tow them. There are children playing, riding bicycles, and elderly residents walking. The park was not designed with sidewalks, so the only place to walk is on the edge of the street. The children ride bicycles and walk wherever they want. I was told by one attorney that we can serve seven-day notices on people who are speeding and running stop signs. The problem is many drivers who do not live in the park. There are three hundred and two homes, and it is difficult to get people to give us their names and current phone numbers, much less their car description and license plate numbers. On-site security guards are not allowed to ticket them, usually the speeders won't even stop for them. They ignore management when asked to slow down or stop for stop signs. Our new attorney suggested that we ask the city to provide an ordinance for the local police department to enforce the traffic violations. This could be done under Vehicle Code 21107.9 ABCD, Speed Enforcement Agreements. I don't know what to do, but this is a safety issue, and we would like some help from someone to possibly prevent a child or children from being killed. I do realize it is private property, so that's why we're here tonight, to try and see if we can resolve the issue. Thank you.
As she mentioned, it is private property. We will look into what options are available to us, but it's difficult because the streets aren't surveyed, speed's surveyed, number one, and number two, they're not public, if they're not public streets, private property. We can meet with them and assist and look at ways that they could enforce it better in their park. There's also ways that you could design the streets by putting medians and such in them that would slow it down, but we'd be happy to meet with them. For the record, too, I do believe that maybe it wasn't that young lady, but we have been in contact, our Public Safety Office, two of our employees have been working with that very park, so it hasn't, that they have not returned their call. Captain, is there anything we can do?
We'll have to see how that meeting unfolds again, how the city has a private park, things are not being surveyed, they're not really subject to big proportion, and maybe something the city may be able to work out, allowing that for the reports.
Okay. Mark, can you see what you can do about it to get it fixed? Absolutely. Lee DeRico and someone will meet, probably myself, will meet with them. Kimberly?
Hi, good evening. I'm a new resident to Lancaster. My name's Kimberly Clarkson, recently retired LA County school nurse. I do live in Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park for about the last year. I'm here to sort of support what Terry was saying and reading in her letter. You know, I understand that it's never a good idea to tilt at windmills, or as Don Cahody tried to do, dream an impossible dream, but I do know that all of the citizens living in the private mobile home parks pay very public taxes. So although we live in private communities, we are public citizens, and therefore, it sounds like you are considering some important steps. Would you consider, please, also going to the various other mobile home parks in the area, maybe seeing if, at the City Council, you can also work with Palmdale, because those of you here that have the power can hopefully get things done in a very timely way? And perhaps the fire department, who has informed various mobile home parks in writing that we're not allowed to use speed bumps, could reconsider that? They seem to have no problem getting paramedics units in, they do all the time. As a registered nurse, I can attest to it. So what speed bumps are there are very helpful, but there aren't enough, and they're not in the right places. I don't think it's an impossible dream to work with the fire department, to come up with a sort of deterrent that will make it safe for their fire vehicles and also slow people down. I have witnessed near misses on a regular basis. That's pretty much all I have to say. I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and to be a member now in the Lancaster community. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne?
I also live in Lancaster Estates, and speeding and stop signs has been a problem for a long time, and somebody's going to get hit, get hurt, and I hate to see if it's a kid, because that's what I'm afraid is going to happen. And whatever Terry had brought up here, I back her one hundred percent. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Darlene, I'm saving you for last. V? No, 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 you're not up yet. I'm going to call V up first.
Did you call me?
No, I just told you you were going to be last.
Oh, well, I thought this was it, all right.
You're getting close. You always save the best for last.
Your friend's there, so good to see you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
I'm also here to talk about the AV Bus Service. I've been using it since my stroke in 2001, I'm asthmatic too, and I've had good service, but recently, the buses have not maintained their ramps. I fell off the bus November twentieth on my back, because they are not maintaining the ramps that we seniors have to go up on. They're rusty, they're torn rubber, and my cane got hooked on one of their doors, and I fell out on the sidewalk. I'm pretty healthy, so I'm glad I'm alive, so I did break my foot, but I want to bring that to your attention. And I saw one of the new electric buses, I only see one, but I hope they're going to maintain the buses better than that, than they're doing now. And they also are in talking about charging us senior citizens seventy-five cents now to get on the bus. I've enjoyed it for ten years, having, I was proud of this city, that we had free buses for the seniors. I could go to the grocery store, not bother anybody, and come home on the bus for free. I don't have to carry around coins, I don't have to have that extra burden. But now I hear they're talking about raising the fees to seventy-five cents. What a disservice, what else can you do to us? You know, they're already working on our pensions and everything. What a country, I thought this city was different, but I guess not. I certainly hope you don't charge us seniors seventy-five cents a time to get on the bus. Thank you very much.
V, they're looking into rate structuring, and that was one of the options that they did bring up. The jurisdiction of Lancaster disagrees with it. So I want to make sure that you're aware of it, that we disagree with the option that they proposed of charging the seniors, so.
Yeah, I was there two weeks ago, and they were really talking about it. Yeah, the public relations lady asked me if I'd be willing to pay seventy-five cents, and I told her, "No, I can't." That was two weeks ago, Tuesday, so I'm glad to hear your attitude. I'm proud of this city, and I love to get around in this city, so, you know, I'm trying to take care of the library and the MetroLink, so.
Thank you, thank you for what you do. Darlene?
Are you sure?
Can, can we conference on it?
Well, I don't want you to make any more mistakes. I'm here to tell you that I support all of these.
Time.
You know, I will have my revenge, I will. I'm here to support these people from Lancaster Estates, and everything they say is true about the speeding. And on another note, I'm glad that you seemingly solved the MetroLink location problem, because for a while, I was really worried that I was going to have to publish all your home phone numbers in the Allo Valley Press, so they know who to call to get a ride to the new location out in the boonies. But since you have been kind of honorary to me, I may butcher some of you, so, you know, look for it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You got a pen? I'll give it to you.
Six-six-one.
Okay, nothing but love today. Okay, we're going to adjourn to a recess to close session, and we're going to discuss the items one through eight. And when we come back, we will adjourn in the memory of Alan Lee Andrews and Susan Janet Grantham. City Attorney.
In closed session, the City Council discussed items one, two, eight, and gave direction to legal counsel, no reportable action.
Thank you. Sondra, will you do the adjournment, please?
I'd be honored. Thank you for asking, Vice Mayor. We are adjourned in the memory of Alan Lee Andrews. He worked for Lockheed before finding his love for teaching at Allo Valley College. He is also an ordained minister at the Allo Valley Christian Center, where he taught the Word of God and served the people of his church and community. He served on the Board for Grace Resource Center as another way to support his community. He was loved by his family, friends, and colleagues, and will be missed by all who knew him. Also, we are adjourned in the memory of Susan Janet Grantham. She has been a heavily involved member in our community and an active real estate agent broker, helping many families along the way. She was a devoted mother and grandmother. She will be missed by family and friends. The City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January twenty-seventh at 5:00 P.M.
Thank you.